...September 5th, meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Psychowski.
Yeah.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Chad Agalovitz.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Thank you. Before we go into the minutes, I have a quick little proclamation to give a little honor to a longtime employee. I think forty-four years of service is rather remarkable in any organization. So, I didn't have an opportunity to talk to him personally, but I think he deserves this anyways. It reads as follows: "The East Hampton City Council does hereby recognize David Kalizik for his forty-four years of service working for the residents of the city of East Hampton as a valued member of the East Hampton Department of Public Works." This is signed by myself, the council president, Mr. McCoy, and it's presented this fifth day of September two thousand and twelve. I will ask the clerk to actually present this to him and hope everybody approves. Counselor Psychowski.
I can remember when Daisy first went on the crew for the town, and in my estimation, being a lifelong resident, we had a few more employees like Daisy because he got, even with that nickname that he picked up at the old boathouse. He was a good employee and he got everything done. If you needed a tunnel through the mountain or dig a water line through the mountain, just give Daisy a shovel and a pick and stand back. He'd get it done all by himself. Thank you, Daisy, for working for the town all these years.
Thank you. Any other council would like to make any comments?
I'm just gonna echo Counselor Psychowski's accolades. He's always been a very loyal employee and well-deserved retirement for him.
Amen. Okay, that said, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes for August 1st.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion on the table, approve the minutes of August 1st. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
One abstention.
One abstention.
One abstention?
Yep.
Did you get that? Next on the agenda is our public speak time. This is where if there's any member of the audience who'd like to come address the council on any matter that's not on our current public hearing, please step forward, state your name and address to the podium, and we'd be welcome to listen to you.
There we go again.
Counselor.
My name is Suzanne O'Donnell and I live at thirteen West Street. Let me get my... I'm making a collective statement from the people who were involved in the recall organizing group. This is from all of us, although we couldn't all be here tonight. We want to be clear that the recall effort was about racism and sexism and about making East Hampton a better place and a welcoming place for everyone. Of course, we are disappointed that we have fallen short of collecting the two thousand two hundred thirty-five signatures in three weeks. We fell short by a mere point two percent. However, we remain both grateful and optimistic. We are grateful to the canvassers who pounded pavements and stood at public places attempting to collect signatures. We are grateful to the businesses that took a strong stand and agreed to have petitions at their counters. We are grateful to the two thousand five hundred residents and more who signed the petition, a truly amazing number. Why optimistic? Although there will not be a recall election, we think that more residents have opened their eyes to the realities of racism and sexism in public officials and the importance of standing up to bullies. We hope that Mr. Psychowski will think more deeply about his actions and comments that led to this effort, and we hope that he will choose to resign in the face of the large percentage of registered voters who have made a strong statement with their signatures calling for his resignation. Two thousand two hundred nineteen voters are watching him more closely these days in addition to the significant number of newly registered voters who will also be watching. They will consider the candidates very carefully come the next citywide election in fall two thousand and thirteen. Mr. Psychowski has been advised to step down by most of his fellow counselors. Now, he is being urged by a large portion of city voters. He needs to resign now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to come forward and speak to the city council in any measure not currently on our public hearing agenda? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to communications from elected officials in boards committee. Counselor McCoy.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. One comment that's not really political public record, but do have a notice from the Hampshire County. They're celebrating the three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. That will be on Friday, September fourteenth, from five to eight p.m. at the old courthouse in North Hampton. We have a variety of political speakers and entertainments, so it should be a fun time celebrating our county's three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. For more public record kind of communications, we do have a communication from the Man-Hand Rail Trail. Basically, I'll summarize the letter just saying they're concerned, again, about that bike path intersection near Liberty Street, near the 7-Eleven, the likelihood of there being accidents there, and they're just making notice for the council and the Board of Public Works about their concerns about that safety. We also had a communication from the East Hampton City Arts, which is a resolution in which they propose the formation of the East Hampton Cultural District to more outline our cultural strengths and probably make us more available to state and national recognition as well as hopefully some additional funding that may be available if that designation is made. So, both of these communications are public record and can be read at the city clerk's office if you would like to. That's end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor, Rist, would you like to move that?
President Cobb, yes, I'd like to move the request for the Cultural District to Rules Committee for review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to remove the request from the ECA plus for a resolution or establishment of a city Cultural District to rules. Any further comment on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any abstentions or objections? Seeing none, so moved.
And that, that...
Counselor Psychowski. Counselor Psychowski.
As you know out there, I approached BPW Board for reduction in sewer rates during the summer months, and I finally received a letter. Regrettably, I'm gonna have to read this to you. Dear Counselor Psychowski, the BPW reviewed your request for reduction of sewer rates during the summer months. The enterprise fund needs to be self-supporting and should be using the water and sewer rates... It should not be using the water and sewer rates to cover operating... to cover current year operating costs. This is currently not happening. The enterprise is using one-time fees to supplement the operating budget. To reduce the sewer fees, the sewer rates for the summer, the BPW would have to increase the rates to make up the difference. If the rates were to bring in more money, the first priority would be to add personnel that have been cut due to the budget constraints. The BPW denies your request to offer any reductions in the sewer rates. Well, that letter's fine and good, but I just wanna tell the people out there that I'm gonna follow up on this. I have some other ideas, and in this letter, I have a few more things to check, and I realize right now with September, nobody's gonna be out there watering. It seems like it took a long time to get an answer, three months. So, but we'll see what we can do during the winter months to try to bring some relief to the taxpayers and the property owners of this town that they don't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Psychowski. Any further comment? Okay, that said, we can go to committee reports. The committee of communication, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just three items on your agenda. I'll go through them fairly quickly. The first is a response to a letter that's also included in your packet that I believe Counselor McCoy received to the council president with some concerns about Charter Communications and their operations and policies, and the letter kind of is a standard response as we don't really control much of that. Actually, in most instances with regards to television, it's really the signal quality that we have some leverage over, and that's about it. And clarifying that Charter is not an exclusive, although no one else chooses to provide services in East Hampton, it is not an exclusive contract, and anyone who wants to provide television services can. The second item is just a request for some clarification on the motion last meeting about the window project for Riverside. There are a couple of items. There was a language voted that requires us to adhere to the Secretary of Interior standards, and those standards are much more encompassing, I think, than maybe you realized, and they have a lot of requirements before one gets to replacement. And so, I know that the request made to the CPA committee and to the city council was for funds to help with the replacement project is allowable under the Secretary of Interior's guidelines. I'm just wanting to get clarification that that's really what you meant. Trying to be very clear about it. Also, I want you to be aware that there are areas in the building where replacement windows have already been installed, and so in those areas, which really are the back of the building and less visible, the windows that are going to be installed are going to be similar to the windows that they've already installed, and that project is gonna be funded with their own money. And so, I want to get clarification that we're talking about replacing windows with windows that look just like the historic windows on the Cottage Street side of the building, and I'm perfectly comfortable moving this funding forward. I just wanna make sure that for the record, we're all on the same page. And then finally, as a proclamation, I would certainly encourage the city council to join me declaring September as Hunger Action Month. I know you guys love to listen to me, but I'm not necessarily gonna read this entire proclamation, but we have seen over the last few years a market increase in the demand for food services to people who are having difficulty in these difficult economic times, and we have an organization, two organizations that are supported in our budget. One is the Survival Center and the other, and more prominently, the East Hampton Community Center, both offer food programs, and so this is a way to support their efforts and the efforts of the Food Bank of Western Mass in raising awareness of the hunger situation here in Western Massachusetts and, to be quite honest, across the nation. With that, Mr. President, I have nothing else. If you'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wait, I'll just stay right there for a minute. Before we go, one of the first items that he mentioned in our communication, there was a little misprint, said it required some action. It doesn't require any action from us, unless we intend to call Charter personally if you receive some complaints. The second item, I'm gonna allow Counselor Hagan to actually address, if you don't mind. Counselor Hagan?
No, in some discussions with the mayor and also some committee members, it appears what the mayor said is obviously accurate regarding the interior standards of replacement versus repair. Under the CPA though, anything historic has to meet these standards, so it's not that we can bypass the standards. I think we just have to clarify our intent of the standards. And I did pull the standards, which I can give a copy to the other counselors, and I think if we operate under number six, or maybe in amended motion, which I'm certainly willing to make, under standard six, which is what I think our, at least was my intent, and I'm assuming was the intent of the other counselors, it says the deteriorated historic feature shall be repaired rather than replaced. That's the part I think the mayor was concerned about. But it does say where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, which would be the windows, the new feature shall match the old and design texture, standard and visual qualities, and where possible materials. Replacement of missing feature shall be substantiated by documentation, physical or picture, so I certainly would be willing to make a motion that it was our intent, if, given the counselors debate, that our intent was if the windows are deteriorated to the point that they need to be replaced, that as long as they're replaced in the design color, texture, and visual qualities, and they take a picture of before and after, it certainly would satisfy us.
I would simply request, unless the mayor's in a hurry for this, that we draft the language that the mayor and you and the committee can agree to. I'm assuming we're having another finance meeting, so maybe there's a time when we could talk it through. I don't know. Can we do this at the next meeting, Michael?
I don't believe there's a serious...
Right, I was gonna make, that was my final thing, Counselor Rist. I was gonna see if we can move it to finance this coming week and then have a motion prepared for next week that would encompass all this, and with the other counselors having that, certainly if anyone has any other ideas, I've gone going through the list. I only, you know, reviewed them very quickly myself, but that's...
Counselor Psychowski.
Does anybody know if the mill is in a historical register or is it just in a historical district? Because there's quite a difference.
It is not on the register.
It's on a register?
It is not.
Not on a register, so it's in a district. So, I believe it's a little bit more liberal when you're just in a...
District.
Just in a district, not on a register. So, I mean, because we went through this one time a long time ago, I think, somewhere. So, I think that'd be a good thing to check out.
Again, I'm sorry.
You all set?
Just one more comment. I just wanna say this was an item that was unanimously approved by CPA and by the council members that could vote. I know some had to recuse themselves from voting. So, that being the case, I'd make a motion that this be referred back to the finance subcommittee meeting to draft a motion, amended motion that can be brought up in the next session.
Hagan. Okay, we have a motion on the table to move this item back to finance. This can be considered a pre-notice for parliamentary procedure, and we'll come back with an amended motion of a previously adopted motion. Any discussion?
I would just say, reading this, I think my interpretation is that unless we were replacing something that didn't already exist there, then we would have to have the pictorial evidence. I don't think that they're gonna need to take pictures of the windows that are already there and replacing them. That's just...
Wouldn't hurt them to have them.
Wouldn't hurt to have. That's just my sense.
Thank you. Any other further comment on the motion? Hope you get... All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? We should have two.
I can send that committee, can't I?
You can send it to committee.
We'll send it to committee.
Okay, that said, no abstentions, no objections. Motion passes. Okay, that concludes our mayor communications. We'll go back to the... Take a motion to enter into public hearing, please.
Second.
We have a motion to enter into public hearing. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we received a proposal from Mr. Mason, the Director of Parks and Recreation, who was hoping to be able to place a sandwich board sign for community-sponsored or city-sponsored events at Pulaski Park, which was currently prohibited under our sign ordinance. And after deliberation with Mr. Mason and the planning board, the ordinance subcommittee felt that it was a completely fair and reasonable thing to allow the city to place signage on city property where it's being maintained by the Parks and Rec Department, and we recommended this three to zero. And even though I have not seen the actual written recommendation from the planning board, they also unanimously recommended this as well. Okay, good. I just didn't, I didn't see it. I was looking for it. They recommended it as well. So, if anybody has questions?
Any questions for the counselor?
I got an amendment to offer.
Okay, I can come up. Counselor Derby.
Okay.
And members of the public have any questions for this? Seeing none, Counselor.
Okay, so I'd like to move that we amend the city zoning ordinance by adding the following to section ten point zero signs, subsection ten point zero five one D one. East Hampton Parks and Recreation event signage is allowed to be placed at Pulaski Park for city-sponsored community events. Any signage will be placed in the morning and removed that same evening. No sign shall be left overnight or longer than twelve hours on any given day.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend the aforementioned motion to amend the sign ordinance. Okay?
And I have an amendment to offer to that. I would like that motion to stand, but also to add the farmer's market signs as have been up there ever since this started. They put them up there on a rotary, and I think that would be a good thing to allow on a rotary the farmer's market sign. And before some trouble starts, I'd like to just offer that right in there as an amendment to that, and I don't think it's gonna hurt either.
We have a second on the amendment?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. We have a second on the amend, amendment to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor McCoy?
Yeah, I'm, I am completely on board with Counselor Psychowski's intent. I'm just concerned about the language. How do, 'cause how do you rewrite that in... We can't say just the farmer's market because that's too exclusionary. I don't know if this needs to go back to committee. I mean, I understand the intent. It would be nice, but I'm not sure how to write it in a general way for other things.
Before, is Counsel Derby going here, sir? You wanna...
Well, I'll let...
Counselor Rist.
I also don't necessarily disagree with Counselor Psychowski, but I think it needs some discussion in committee, and I would prefer the counselor withdraw his motion and send the request to committee. My main concern is opening the door to who else would want to put signs there. Should we have a community bulletin board that allows for that or something else? Pulaski Park is a park, so it's appropriate that a sign for park and rec activities would be there, but, and of course, the farmer's market is a great thing. We should probably help advertise it, but there's other great events in town that we might, that they're gonna wanna come forward. So, I think it needs a little more discussion than just throwing it in there this evening. So, that's my thought on it. I can't vote in favor of the amendment this evening. I'd just like it to be discussed more.
Okay. Counselor Derby?
My thoughts, I agree with the counselors. I think that this is a great intent, and I do think that the language could be a little tricky because we're not really quantifying farmer's market. You know, I could have a vegetable stand set up and call it a farmer's market, and, you know, so I think that maybe we should look at that a little bit more, and my interpretation of looking at this is, you know, that we're talking about event signage through the Parks and Recreation Department for city-sponsored community events, and, you know, possibly the farmer's market organizers could approach the rec department and ask. That could be a direction that this could be taken.
Put on their sign.
So, it goes through them, which might take care of that, because you could say that it's a city-sponsored event, possibly, you know. So, that's just, so I agree. I think that I would prefer this to either go to committee or maybe have more clarified language.
I will ask the Counselor Psychowski.
The thing we have to remember, the farmer's market's on city property now.
Yeah, so it could be city-sponsored.
So, it's almost like a city, you know, the city is sponsoring it to a certain degree. So, I mean, what, they've been putting a sign up there, and I just wanna make sure they don't get into any trouble because I think it's a proper thing, and maybe sooner or later, we're gonna have to look at it, the sign language again and do something else on all the signs in town.
Would you, I will ask the Counselor Direct if you wanna withdraw your motion and then put a request before the council.
Oh, sure. I'll withdraw my motion. What was that? Correct thing to do for your guy.
You withdraw your second.
Oh, sure, I withdraw my second.
Okay, then I will be expecting a request. If not, I'll put one in myself to review that for, have ordinance have that reviewed. Counselor Rist.
I just wanted to remind the council, if we're gonna make a zoning ordinance change, it's gotta go to planning as well. So, if we're gonna do that officially, maybe there's an initial discussion, and then if there's a decision that a zoning amendment's necessary, we have to go in through the formal requirements of zoning amendments.
We have to go to planning board.
Right. So, I think the initial discussion is do we wanna do it, and if we wanna do it, then a zoning amendment.
Okay. Would you like me to put in a request, Counselor?
Will we do that after this motion?
Okay.
I'll bring it in two weeks' time.
Excellent. That said, we still have the main motion on the floor to approve the language. All those, is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just have one question for... Is there any events that go more than one day, Salem? In other words, like, I don't wanna restrict them if it's like a two-day... And again, I don't know what they...
This wouldn't restrict them from putting...
They just have to put them up.
Multiple days, they just have to take it down at the end of the day.
Okay, I have no problem.
Which is good for vandals.
Or bad.
Farmer's market seems...
I mean, I have a van doll.
They're illegal.
I don't think I'm...
Okay.
That's why I wanted to address.
Any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Motion passes. That concludes our agenda for public hearing.
Move we close the public hearings?
Second.
Motion on the table, close the public hearing. Any comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? None. Motion passes. We move on to reports to standing committees, rules and government relations. Counselor Rist.
Yes, I do want to report that we've given, we've been given the ECA request this evening, and under new business, we will be getting an adoption of MGL Chapter thirty-two B, sections twenty-one to twenty-three, which are the proper sections in the health insurance debate, which is a very important one. I've already set up a meeting, and the committee has agreed to meet on September eighteenth, hoping that our finance director can make it. I haven't heard from her, but also the Insurance Advisory Board will be there, and Representative Cybek will be there to explain that it came out of his committee, and he's an author. I think it's very valuable for other counselors to attend. This is an important debate on how the city will be dealing with its employee health insurance and savings that could come. So, September eighteenth, six o'clock, conference room one. That concludes, sir.
Thank you. Finance. Counselor Hagan.
First, I'd like to say that the next finance meeting, obviously to take up the issue we talked about earlier, we'll have the next finance meeting on September twelfth, room one of Payson. Also at that time, under finance, Counselor Psychowski's request for exclusion of sixty-two, we debated that at the last subcommittee meeting, and there was some discussion of the members of whether we can, the legality of its implementation, in other words, whether it can or can't. So, as a result of that, I penned a letter which was shown to the other committee members and to Counselor Psychowski requesting a legal opinion from the Department of Revenue. I haven't got back a response yet, so if we get one back by the next subcommittee meeting, we can readdress that. If not, we'll have to wait till the following one. We also made a vote in committee on the salary stipend and review of elected officials and multiple body members. On a three-zero vote, we voted that there would be no change in the salary of any elected officials or multiple member bodies of city boards and committees following the next biannual election. I'm not sure if we need a formal motion on that or if that's just to go to the full council. We could do that. And finally, I'd like to set a public hearing for September nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, to take up the two hundred thousand dollars for the CPA funds for affordable housing at the former Die Works Building. On that, I'll put in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars for CPA funds for affordable housing at the former Die Works Building. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None, so moved. The item, since this was an item on our agenda issued for the salary and stipend review, and the city council has a recommendation, do you wanna vote to, wanna make a motion to remove it from our agenda, or Counselor Rist?
Since the recommendation from the committee was three to zero against, I would recommend that we move it from the agenda unless other counselors want to debate it further. That's my motion.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to remove the salary and stipend review from the agenda unless there's an objection. Any further discussion on the motion?
I'll just second it.
Counselor Winnie seconded it. Okay, that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. So done.
That concludes finance.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy, public safety.
I'll report this evening, Mr. President.
You, Counselor Winnie, appointments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We had, we have one mayoral appointment, Thomas Orbiscus, to the Board of Public Works. Counselor Ziegler and I met with him, had the pleasure of meeting with him tonight before our meeting at our, our subcommittee meeting, and found him to be very knowledgeable about the ins and outs and workings of streets and underneath the streets, as he's been working for the gas company for a number of years as the road supervisor. The committee voted two to one to recommend, two to zero to recommend the appointment to the full committee for the Board of Public Works.
Any questions for the counselor on this appointment? Seeing none.
Okay, I make the motion that Thomas Orbiscus be named to the Board of Public Works with
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a mayoral appointment of Thomas Orbiscus to the Board of Public Works with an expiration date of 12/31/14. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Winnie, you still have the floor.
Yes, thank you. We do have a new appointment coming up, a new business, I would like to make the subcommittee meeting for our September.
19.
19th meeting at quarter of six, to review the new appointments.
Okay, that concludes your report.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is going to be September 12th at 6:30 p.m. at a room to be determined, where we're going to try to whittle down some of our agenda, but I can see now that we need an extension on one item, which is the rescinding stretch code business, so I'd like to ask for a 60-day extension in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for a 60-day extension concerning Counselor Psychowski's request to rescind the stretch code in over 55 housing with bonus. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Okay? Counselor Riss?
I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that you have a public hearing scheduled for the bicycle ordinance, and I was wondering if you'll be, you'll be prepared?
I'll be prepared, I've been prepared.
No, I know, but I mean, because there was discussion, I didn't.
Yes, yes, I did see that it was moved to the 19th for public hearing.
Joint hearing.
And the joint hearing, the 25th, you want me to announce that?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're going to also, sorry, I'm still on, still on, we're going to have a joint public hearing on the 25th at 6:00 p.m. downstairs, I think it's Conference Room B.
With the planning board?
With the planning board, and it's going to be looking at the section 11-12 of the pre-existing non-conforming, single-family or two-family residential structures, so that's going to be, again, on September 25th at 6:00 p.m. in Conference Room B with the planning board.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Derby?
That concludes my report.
That concludes, Counselor Psychowski, property?
No report this evening.
Thank you. That said, we do have no old business up, new business, mayoral appointments, Counselor Winnie, can move those to appointments, please.
Thank you, yes, move Linda A. Bush, zoning board of appeals, Kate Shapiro, zoning board of appeals, Raym Hutchinson to the plea board of directors, the Public Library Association, and Thomas Raffensperger to the PLAe Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to recommend the four mayoral appointments to appointments committee for review. Any further comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Next one is, I'm going to go to, this one, you want this one to go to rules? Yes.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, for the request for MGL Chapter 32b, sections 21, 23, to be adopted, to be sent to rules for review.
Second.
Here we have a motion on the table to recommend that the request to adopt Master General Law Chapter 32b, section 21 to 23, health insurance be moved to rules for review. Any further comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Next item is for finance, Counselor Hagan.
I make a motion that, a request from Counselor Cobb to review the senior exemptions under Master General Law 59, section 5, be moved to the finance committee for further review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend that the request from Counselor Cobb to review the senior exemptions under Master General Law 59, section 5, be moved to finance for review. I'd like to comment that there's a couple pages of additional information that go along with this study that was provided by the assessors' office, and we'll clarify all the actual numbers and everything in finance. That said, is there any further comment on this motion?
Just make a quick comment, I think this, at least in subcommittee, came about when we started discussing Counselor Psychowski's request for exemptions and looking for ways that possibly we can help certain senior citizens in town if it's feasible, and I think we wanted to look at all avenues, and I think that was one more avenue we chose to.
By looking at all avenues is very proper.
Thank you, Counselor Psychowski. Okay, any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor to adjourn, it's not available, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
No signatures?
Nope.
No.
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 No.